Hey, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Rochester City Council for August 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Nixon.
Here.
Avakwa.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
All right, next, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll all stand for that. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, welcome, everybody. It's hot out there tonight, so it's good to be in the hopefully nice air-conditioned place. So first, we're going to go to public comment, and we have a presentation, the proposed budget from RARO today. So Ron is our Executive Director. Welcome, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. On behalf of the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority, for those of you who don't know me, I haven't had a chance to meet yet. I'm Ron Jewell, the Executive Director. I'm accompanied by Joseph Snyder, RARO's Treasurer, and also Rochester Hills Chief Financial Officer, who will assist with the budget, the brief presentation today, along with any Q and A you guys might have. So with that said, we'll get right to the budget highlights. This fiscal year 21 through 23 budget has presented as a challenge for RARO administration in projecting revenues and expenditures as the world is navigating through a pandemic impacting every industry, including the parks and recreation profession. At this time, this budget was submitted, RARO is still largely shut down to activities with the exception of limited programs offered in an outdoor setting per Executive Order 12B of EO 2020-110. Programs and services represented in this proposed budget plan are conservatively projected, anticipating this executive order being lifted prior to the fiscal year 21 season commencing. All RARO programs and services have been impacted in some way, shape, or form due to the social distancing component of this order, which drastically changes how all recreation programs can and will be implemented for the foreseeable future. RARO fiscal year 21 through 21, I'm sorry, through 23 budget significant notes. Anticipated program revenues have been significantly reduced, ranging from 40 upwards of 80% depending on the program. Anticipated program expenditures have been significantly reduced as a result of anticipated reduction in program revenue. Capital improvements have all been deferred, and personal services have been reduced in both the administrative and program cost centers in order to reflect a balanced budget. Note that the program supervisors will take on more responsibility in program implementation, notably the registration side, as the main office staffing has been reduced significantly. RARO administration recognizes the additional responsibilities due to consolidating services and is in the process of implementing new software to assist in the transition. Turn it over to Joe for some more highlights here.
Joe, welcome.
Thank you for having me, Mayor Vixen, and nice to see you all, Rochester City Council. My part's a little bit more boring here, but I'll let you know that the grand total proposed fiscal year 21 RARO expenditure budget is $1.765 million. And this represents a 32% reduction from the current year fiscal year 2020. The grand total proposed RARO revenue budget for next year is $1.769 million, and that represents a 36% reduction from 2019. So in summary, it's proposed for RARO revenues to exceed RARO expenditures by just over $3,000. That would be $3,000 that would be contributed into RARO's fund balance at the end of '21. So basically, a break-even budget is what is being proposed for RARO. Now, RARO ended fiscal year 2019 with $365,000 in fund balance, and that's a good thing. We've really increased fund balance for RARO over the past two to three years. And RARO administration, including Mr. Jewell, they've been working with myself continually monitoring the current year fiscal 2020 budget. RARO administration has been very aggressive in reducing their expenditures in this current year fiscal year 20 budget to minimum levels in order to balance out the anticipated reductions in program revenues this year. And at this point, it is still projected that there will be pretty close to a break-even impact on the 2020 budget. So we're expecting very little impact on RARO fund balance this year as our expenditures are anticipated to be reduced to the level of revenue coming in. Now, RARO does have a fund balance policy, and it calls for fund balance to be maintained at a minimum of 20% of annual operating expenditures. Well, as I just mentioned, the fiscal year 21 RARO budget proposes $1.765 million of expenditures. So the corresponding fund balance to be maintained is approximately $350,000. As I just mentioned, we ended 2019 with $365,000. So it is anticipated for RARO to be at its fund balance minimum target by the end of fiscal year 2020, which complies with the three-year plan to get to 20%. And moving forward, we need RARO to continue to operate with a structural surplus of revenues over expenditures to maintain that minimum target balance moving forward. I very much commend Mr. Jewell and the rest of the RARO staff for being very proactive in addressing the financial constraints that are anticipated both this year and into the future due to revenue reductions due to COVID-19 and the executive orders that must be complied with. We feel Ron has projected his revenues very conservatively, and there's also a great focus on revenue-generating programs, programs that make a net profit after the program is done. As we're right on where our fund balance minimums are, there's not a lot of room to dip into fund balance to subsidize other programs. So just focusing on our core activities and being very responsible going forward is the plan. And with that, Ron and I, or Mr. Jewell and I, are here for any questions from the RARO Council, or I'm sorry, Rochester Council.
Also, questions, Councilmember Albrecht.
Uh, thank you, Joe, and thank you, Ron. And going back to, you know, the third week in March when we held us an emergency meeting and immediately furloughed employees and a lot of other decisions that were done right off the bat, I just wanted to commend Ron and the team there. They have been very conservative, as Joe just articulated. We went over this budget quite a bit at our meeting last week or week ago. And one of the things that Joe touched on that I just want to amplify is the fact that, you know, while we want to be something to everybody, we can't offer every program that we've done in the past. If a program is not going to deliver some sort of return on investment, we might have to just set it on this, set it to the side, you know, for the upcoming year till this, till this all passes. Ron's supervisors have done a great job of going out and creating, I mean, they're out playing baseball and softball, and they're having the camps. They're doing as much as they can outdoors as possible. So I would, when the time comes, I'd like to make the motion for us to approve the budget as presented by Ron Jewell and Joe Snyder.
Your comments, Council.
Support.
All right, so a motion by Councilmember Albrecht, I'll take that as a motion of support by Councilmember Keith Lee. Further discussion to pass the RARO budget. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Nixon.
Yes.
Avakwa.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Mr. Jewell, Mr. Snyder, was that fast enough to get you over to Rochester Hills?
Nine minutes, not bad.
Plenty of time.
Thank you, guys, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have a presentation, the proposed budget for the OPC. We have Renee and Tim here, and I just want to say congratulations on the budget, on the millage passing. Congratulations on that. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm going to share my presentation here.
Okay.
To that here.
All right.
All right, so, um, all right, so I'm going to start off Renee Courtwright, Executive Director from the OPC, and Tim Sauvay, Administrative Director. We just want to say thank you to the Rochester community for your 80% approval of the OPC's operating millage renewal. It truly shows how the seniors and the disabled are valued in our communities, and it's just fantastic. We're very excited and pleased. I want to say special thanks to our governing board members, Nancy Salvia and Doug Gould, and our former members who were part of the whole process and the decision-making, and that would be Mayor Vixen and Lucy Strand. I'm going to start off this evening in just talking about OPC's response to COVID-19. As you're aware, on March 13th, the COVID pandemic forced the closure of the OPC facility. But the doors may have been closed, but the essential work and services and critical care to the vulnerable seniors, the very heart of OPC's mission, kicked into high gear. And our Meals on Wheels services, nutrition services, and wellness check, we had an increase in the number of seniors served during this time. It was increased to meet the demand and continued delivery of the hot meals even during the middle of the crisis. Between, also, then we had the transportation, the critical rides, the dialysis, the necessary medical appointments, the grocery shopping. We went into our senior support services, the telephone reassurance calls to thousands of seniors. And thank you to so many of the council, the staff there at the city that helped to make those telephone reassurance calls. We are continuing to make those telephone reassurance calls and connect with those seniors. We've been able to deliver many essential items, masks, and so forth during this time. And then our shelf-stable meal deliveries, we've actually delivered over 15,000 pounds of produce and shelf-stable meals during this last five months. And then just helping those seniors navigate through all the services that are out there for those homebound seniors. Toward the end of April, we kicked into high gear with our virtual programming, our good news with OPC, all the creative programs. All, we know that the seniors were so missing OPC, so this was a wonderful opportunity to continue those connections. The social isolation was really getting to a high level with our seniors and having that opportunity for them to connect via through the virtual programming, and then we expanded the virtual programming with our exercise classes toward the middle of May. And we've really had such great success with this. And also, we had a grief support group that also began during this time, and that has created some wonderful connections for the seniors in our community. And starting on July 1, we had the addition of the garden tent programming. So we've had exercise classes in there. When I say low impact, that's the Tai Chi, the yoga underneath the tent. And then we've had our art and craft. There was today, they were painting, watercolor painting classes. The Veterans Connection met last week. They had a nice barbecue under the tent, dance and music. And of course, we're following our guidelines. We're following those guidelines that have been adopted by the governing board to keep the seniors safe. And we're looking to continue with this garden tent programming until we're able to open the facility, which we hope will be soon. Governor, the Governor's Executive Order 110 is what has kept us from opening. But we're hoping within the next months that we are going to do a slow roll and make more classes available inside the facility. So stay tuned in that regard. And I just want to say thank you to the generous outpouring of support from the local businesses and community organizations. It's just been fantastic and phenomenal, and truly shows how we are all in this together. So our 2021 to 2023 budget, the budget highlights with the millage approval, which you received the updated expenditures and revenues sheets from Tim, will now, we will be expending our, exceeding our expenditures with this addition of the millage approval. We have the establishment of the budget stabilization account and then really flat capitalization plan for 2021. But we feel very pleased with the approval of the millage because we will have that opportunity if we have the, maybe a HVAC unit. We have any type of a building situation that comes up that we do have that cushion to take care of that, which we didn't really have in moving into this period.
Just a couple, just a couple topics, not very many. The budget's pretty self-explanatory, I think. With RARO, we are hopefully anticipating somewhat of an opening by the first of October, which is our fiscal year. However, as Renee stated, we are anticipating a very slow rollout. We will be maintaining social distancing. We'll be maintaining limits on the number of people in classes, the number of classes offered and things like that. So revenue estimates that are included in this budget do include less fee income, simply because we'll have, even if we're open, we'll have less people in classes for a long time, as well as other things. So that's part of what's in budget you have. You also notice expenditure-wise, we, our policy of practice is the budget for full employment. I could tell you that's what the budget is. That's not what the reality will be. Obviously, we, as RARO did, we furloughed almost all our part-timers in March. The only people, only part-timers back are those working the essential services, meaning the kitchen and transportation. The rest of the operations being handled by 10 or so full-time staff doing basically everything that needs to be done here, and that will continue. We will not be bringing people back on board until we have the work that has to happen. So that's part of our process. And again, we established a budget stabilization account. That's something new. We think it's a little transparent regarding the resources the OPC has. As with RARO, the OPC Board several years ago passed a fund balance policy that quite 25% of our expenditures remain in fund balance. You'll see that, that has stayed there on page seven. However, anything over that, we've now put into a budget stabilization account for the work of administration and the board should we need to do some changes. Basically, again, that said, it's, as with everybody else, it's been a challenge. We are hoping to get the place open soon, but again, we're planning on a slow rollout, so we'll see what goes.
All right, um, Councilmember Salvia.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Renee and Tim, as the OPC Board member and also a member of the OPC Budget Committee. I just wanted to highlight a few things that Tim touched upon, that the numbers are in the packet. You know, the 2020 budget, I think Tim and the entire board was very relieved to see that we're forecasted to finish the fiscal year at a break-even from a expense versus revenues, with the exception of spending to do some capital improvements, which is a perfect time to do it while the facility is empty. So we did do some improvements and take advantage of that. But what's important is going forward, we're forecasting a 65%, 64% fund balance over expenditures. So a very healthy fund balance, and again, can't thank the voters enough. It shows how we all value and how we all love the mission and the work that is done at the OPC. And then the last thing I just wanted to comment on is just the amount of detail and analysis that has gone into making sure that the, both the reopening and the programming is both safe and providing those services to residents. It's such a, this has been so challenging for everyone, and so I appreciate the creativity as well as the emphasis on safety. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to receive and approve the budget as submitted.
Support.
Councilmember Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Albrecht.
I just had a simple question. What is the fiscal year for OPC? It is October 1 through September 30. Okay, and then Renee, when you spoke to us pre-COVID, you were talking about the need for capital improvements, and I mean, you're building quite a bit, or wasn't it, before COVID? And Councilmember Salvia touched on it, you were able to get a lot of things done in this fiscal year, because I know you've cut back capital next year to 42,000, which makes sense. But are you comfortable with what got done is going to last until a year and three months, I guess, until you get into more capital money?
Yeah, we really taking advantage of this opportunity to update some areas in the facility, as long as we're closed, to take care of these really integral items, especially in our pool area. So no one likes to have the pool shut down, so as long as we're under the order of Oakland County and our governor that we need to remain closed, all of the indoor pools, we're taking advantage of this moment to do some great updates during this time.
Thank you.
Further questions? I'd just like to say, I think OPC, you're doing a great job. You know, we talk about the kids in the schools, but I mean, seniors have really gotten hit by this COVID, and not having the OPC open is very difficult. So I know you guys are doing everything you can. I really appreciate that. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Nixon.
Yes.
Avakwa.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Thank you, Renee and Tim.
Cheers.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's nice that OPC and RARO get approved. It's had other years where it hasn't been quite so smooth, but I don't know. Okay, next on is an update of the Downtown Collaboration Studio. We have Christie Trowal here, the Director, Executive Director of the DDA. And Christie, I thought we'd get an update on it, but I thought for people maybe who don't know what Downtown Collaboration Studio is, maybe just give a quick explanation.
More, happy to. So again, hi, Council. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk with you guys tonight. So the Downtown Collaboration Studio came out of a meeting with the DDA Board and the PSD jointly that we really had never gone through anything like this, and so many people at the very beginning kept pointing to Main Street Makeover, which many of you may recall was our big construction project back in 2012. So we pulled out that playbook to see, was there anything that we could cherry pick out of there that we might be able to bring forward? And one of the great successes of the Main Street Makeover was our field office that we had back then. So we took that idea, and it just seemed to work itself out that there was a space coming available on Main Street. That business, their lease was already up, and they had decided with everything going on, they're going to stick with online. So we had the opportunity to take this place, and we just felt like it needed to be a place that, for our merchants and for our community, that people could come because they're going to have questions. They're going to need support. They're going to need, at the time, we didn't know what they would need, but we knew they were going to need things, and for us to be upstairs where we were, maybe it wasn't going to be the best location. So we got a short-term lease on a space right on Main Street. We're at 431 Main Street, next to Greens Art Supply, and we are officially there through the end of December. And when you come into the studio for merchants, that's where they've been coming in to get support, ask questions, pick up their PPE kits, get masks and gloves. The police and fire departments have been very gracious to donate to us, and also for the community to come in and check out what's going on, who we are, what we're about, how they can help our community, and also atone now to our new Love Local brand that we launched during the pandemic as well. So that's sort of a summary of where we, what we, why the Collaboration Studio, but I'm happy to give an update on kind of what we're doing there. And then certainly, if you have any questions, Blaine just said you guys wanted an update, but I wasn't quite sure exactly everything you needed, so I'll just talk a few things. Oh, hi, Nancy, yeah.
I, so Christie, that was my question, and really, I just wanted to know what, you know, success stories, what's happening? And hopefully, you have some amazing, I'm sure you do, amazing success stories.
We do. It's, we've been really fortunate. We did build this big table, and we were really hoping we'd be in phase five so we could have more people come and sit at our table. But with the small groups we've been able to bring in, it's been pretty great for us. So I'll start with a few small things, and then I'll give you one of our most recent things, which I think is going to be a big win for our entire community. Starting with some smaller things, we actually, we just took possession of the space and have been occupying it full-time since about mid-June, mid-June. So it's still pretty new to us. So far, we've had three art installations. These are installations from places in the community. We kicked off with Paint a Miracle, then Hags of Rochester was in last month, and Pink Creek Center for the Arts just moved in today. So it's an opportunity for them to sell their work. We don't get anything from that. It's just strictly to get exposure and to decorate our walls, because we have a lot of those right now. So those are some smaller collaborations. People are loving our window display. I don't know if anyone has seen that. Rochester Hills Museum was kind enough to come down and put all of those things in the window for us. If I could have sold those DNC letters about 10 times over from all the people that have walked in. But people love knowing about our history and seeing that. It was a nice springboard for all of those historic back-in-the-day signs that have now gone up on all the light poles downtown, which is another collaboration that we've been working on with them. One of the most important things that's happened lately is the people coming in from the community to talk to us about what's going on. A lot of people are nervous, and they don't know, and so it's great to have people coming in, especially through the Explorers Club, which is our kids' club that we did, with the parents asking us about businesses, asking us about what's happening with different events. How are we keeping people safe? What are businesses doing? So it's been great to have that dialogue with people. But something that's more tangible for us, I've got two examples for you. One, I don't know if everyone saw, a few weeks ago, we actually had a spot on the national TV show, The List. I don't know if anyone saw that, and on ABC, it airs at 7:00 weekdays, and they did a whole story about what downtowns or small towns are doing, how you can help your small businesses, and they chose us, number one, because Jimmy Rhodes, who is the correspondent, happens to be from Michigan and is an old friend of ours, but also because they loved the angle of our Collaboration Studio and wanted to know more about that because they hadn't seen or heard of anything like that anywhere in the country. So we're pretty excited that that got that feature, and that was some nice national recognition for what Rochester's doing, which we wouldn't have had without the studio. But closer to home, we, when Pink Creek announced that they were going to be doing, that they were going to have to cancel Art and Apples, we had already had some plans in the works to tie in with Art and Apples with a Taste of Fall promotion we were doing and trying to do more art things downtown, and that had been growing. So Beth Chilton, Director of Pink Creek, had reached out to us and asked if she could come sit at the Collaboration Table because she had an idea for us. So she came in about a week, week and a half ago now, and mentioned to us that Genesis Credit Union, which is their largest sponsor of Art and Apples, that they still wanted to make a sponsorship donation to Pink Creek. But of course, Pink Creek doesn't have an event for them to sponsor, and so they're hoping to partner with us and do what they're calling Parking Lot Picassos, where they would actually create, I think people have probably seen these big art shows where they actually do chalk art in parking spaces. It's more like a canvas than it is just like quick chalk art. It's really beautiful artwork. And they were willing, if we would take on Genesis as a sponsor of what we're calling September Art Month, that they would like the funds so that they could do their event, and then we would garner the rest of the funds for us to execute September Art Month. So after they left, my team and I, Jenna and Taylor, we sat and talked about it, and we gave Beth a call and let her know that we're happy to do that, but here are our conditions. Number one, we appreciate Genesis's sponsorship, but we don't want to take their $10,000. We want Pink Creek to take their $10,000. So we're going to execute the whole sponsorship where they get logos, they'll get marketing placement, they'll get everything they would if they were paying sponsor to us, but that full $10,000 is now going to go to Pink Creek. Second, after hearing that they weren't quite sure what they were going to do, because it is, as many of you know, a tremendous shortfall to them, we came up with a secondary idea, and you may have seen this, that we launched last week, our Support Local Art Tow Bag fundraiser that we're doing for Pink Creek. This is at no cost to them, and for, the tow bags are for sale for $15, and every bag that's sold, $10 of every bag goes right back to Pink Creek. The other $5 covers our cost of the actual production of the bag. So, and then, of course, with the, having the installation coming in. So out of that 40-minute conversation sitting at our table, those are three great outcomes that will have both a great impact on our community and a great financial assist for Pink Creek with what they need right now. So I think that's what the Collaboration Studio, it's allowing us to move very quickly, very nimbly to respond. And if people come in and say they want to talk to us, we're right there. We're ready to talk. And within a half hour, we had those things going, and we had that Tow Bag fundraiser online within, I think, four days. And Genesis already signed on. We did that through a Zoom call, and we're moving forward today. So those are just a couple examples, but certainly, I'm sure I could come up with more if anybody, any other specific questions about what we're doing there, but it's been pretty exciting for us.
Thank you, Councilmember Albrecht. You're muted.
They said, I saw something today, they said the most used phrase of 2020 is "you're on mute." They said, I saw something today, they said the most used phrase of 2020 is, "You're on mute." Here I've done it twice already tonight. Okay, I'll get back and inform here. Christie, thanks for the update on the Collaboration Studio and the Tow Bag fundraiser, I hope does very well for you. Thanks for coming up with that idea. I saw something where they were filming a commercial in the Collaboration Studio. I didn't, I don't know, I don't know what that was. So could you expound on that?
Sure. So Chief Financial Credit Union, which is a great partner with us, they're involved in our committees and they're a great sponsor for many of our downtown programs. They are introducing a new contactless pay option through the credit union. And they happened to stop in the studio. Cheryl, who's their marketing director, stopped into the studio, was kind of looking around and called us a day later and said, "I really like what you have going on there. Would you mind if we filmed a commercial in there?" So they actually filmed all around downtown yesterday, or to me, Friday. It all runs together at this point, on Friday. And they did two versions, one with masks that to run now and one without masks that will run later. And it'll be in their branches. And I think they're also going to be buying a TV flight for that as well. And they also filmed at some downtown businesses. And the commercial shows different people shopping downtown and the things that they bought. And then they all show up at the Collaboration Studio to share what they bought and to connect with each other. So it was kind of an exciting opportunity. We found that it really shows well on film. So we think that's a cool thing to, we didn't really know that. All we did was paint in there, honestly. And everybody thinks that we did so much. But we really just, fresh coat of paint does wonders, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keith Lee.
Thank you. Great work with the Pink Creek Center for the Arts. I ordered my tote bag and I'm excited to see these collaborations that you have. I'm wondering, I haven't heard an update recently about the social drinking districts. That's the law that passed in the state. I'm wondering if the DDA has looked into that at all? And if that's something that you, you guys have been discussing?
So that is something that we looked into. We actually had one of our special meetings where that was a topic. We had Chief Shettonhelm with us. He shared some of his thoughts on that process. And at that point, the DDA decided that wasn't something that we were going to actively pursue. And certainly it will be city council's decision if they wanted to pursue something. They would have the final say over that. So we decided to not have that at our table. And if certainly if council wanted to take it up, we'd be happy to be a part of the conversation. But we just felt there, we were already achieving a lot of our goals with the outdoor platforms that we just put in. We'll have a new parklet going in this week that it just wasn't something that we were ready to pursue, so.
The parklets look great, by the way. And I only thought of it the other night because I was in downtown wanting to, you know, utilize those parklets, which are very nice.
Great.
Very good. Any other questions? Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Christie. Wonderful update. I really appreciate the input. Question for you, because obviously, you know, we're going to be entering into the master plan process. And I'm hoping we can leverage the Collaboration Studio throughout that, that entire process with whatever vendor we choose, correct? Going forward. So I'm hopeful that that is an opportunity for us as a city. And then secondly, knowing that our temporary lease runs through the end of the year, have we given any consideration to making it more permanent going forward past that date and relocating the DDA to directly on Main Street, right there where it sits now?
Yes. So back to your first question, yes, we'd love to have everybody come over for the master planning. As soon as I can have more than 10 people in my building, come on down. We'd love to have you. But we have great space to set up boards if we need to do charrettes. In addition to our Collaboration Table, we also have great space that we can set up rounds and chairs. And we have a big screen and anything that we need, we can be happy to host anybody who wants to come down. It's funny that you mentioned about the, our temporary lease. At our last board meeting, the DDA Board directed me to get a three-year lease from our current landlord, Marty Seibert, for the 431 Downtown Collaboration space. And they will be taking that up on their docket next Wednesday at our regular DDA meeting to see what that might look like. So it's ball started and roll. We needed to get open and see if this actually did what we hoped it would. And it seems to be so. DDA has got it on their agenda next Wednesday.
Would we be able to back out of our other lease then? Or would we have?
To be determined. We have talked with, we have had preliminary conversations with our current landlords. So still more conversations to be had. But currently, our lease is up on May 1st of 2021 at our existing space. So, so a lot of miles to go before we sleep. But we're certainly interested in trying to do that, if not at the very least, to be able to sublease that. I will say with the merchandise that we've sold through the Love Local brand, just in the shop, not including online sales, we are fully paying our rent on the studio. So it hasn't been an impact on the DDA budget, so that's been great.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, thank you, Christie. Thank you for showing up. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
Hi, Christie.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 27, 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have approval of the consent agenda. We have one item tonight. There's a request to receive the Local Road Improvement Grant Award and to award the project contracts. There's two things in the consent agenda.
So moved.
Peterson, support by Councilmember Salvia. Discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no old business tonight, no public hearing tonight, no legislative hearing tonight. Onto reports and regular meeting. First, we have a request to authorization of purchase of dispatch furniture from Ziberix Systems for the price of $35,408 and 36 cents. A total project of cost not to exceed $46,408 and 36 cents. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment? Or the chief, Police Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also have the Police Chief, as this is through his department. But this is the request that the council approved for a budget amendment when we went through. This is the furniture in our dispatch center, which will also allow us, again, just a reminder with the ADA components so that we could have the furniture so people could stand up. Again, this is the dispatch center that has our employees working 24/7. This is furniture that's at least, I want to say 15 to 20 years old. As we now have new monitors and other equipment that's there, our current configuration is not really conducive. And Chief can kind of add some additional details.
Chief?
Yes, I think City Manager did a nice job of summarizing the situation. But we did look at two vendors that are primary in this market to provide pricing and also design. Came out to look at our facility and come up with a design that most meets our needs. And that is why we picked Ziveks. While it was not the lowest bidder, and certainly a competitive bid between the two, and provided a solution that's much better suited for the, for the small area of the room that we have and gives us the features that our dispatchers had requested to improve the workstations.
Very good. Council?
Like to make a motion to approve the purchase?
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Salvia. Discussion? Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, it might be helpful if we could get, and I know we've gone through the budgeting process, identified projects that are contained within that. If there is a schedule as far as a, an implementation timing for these projects throughout the rest of the fiscal year, it might be helpful for us as a guiding document as well, as well as those projects and their rating on the performance scorecard.
Great. I'd be happy to work with their finance department to create a schedule that has timelines.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. This item and the next item, I know we budgeted them and I'm not saying I'm against them. But, you know, we had talked about with the pandemic, being very concerned about what we're spending. And, you know, the, these are not essential things. So I just want us all to be aware that, you know, you know, the budget is going to get tighter. And, you know, we need to consider this. And it seems like every week now or every meeting, we seem to have something like this. So it's just something I think, and I've talked to a number of city council people who, you know, feel the same way. So I just think it's something that we need to stay aware of. Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So I was thinking that about, you know, the vehicles that we'd be purchasing and the vehicle that we purchased, you know, last week as well. I mean, at the last meeting. This year, though, the why I am for having this furniture being purchased at this point in time is, and that is one of the most critical parts of the police department that needs good working equipment and setup for what they do. And as technology has changed, we really can't be behind that, behind in that technology because we need it because they are going to be the ones that keep us safe. And I think that the police department itself has gone through many, pushed back many things for many years of not bringing stuff forward. And yes, there may be a pandemic, but we have also spent a lot of money in the past six months that probably shouldn't have been spent either. And I think that when it comes to the safety of our workers and the job performance of public safety, this is well-spent besides paying $400 a month for a vehicle that's being leased. So my comment, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm not saying these things aren't needed. It's just, are they essential?
It is.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Heathley?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have the request for the approval of purchase of two 2021 GMC trucks for the Public Works. Mr. City Manager.
Again, I'll start off and then Sandy and also Jeremy are here. Two vehicles that are being discussed in the scorecards are in Council's packet, starting at page 63. The first vehicle is a vehicle from 2011 and the other vehicle is from 2013. The reason why we are bringing these vehicles forward or these vehicles would be used in our snow operations. And if we do not order these vehicles now, there is a chance that we will not have vehicles equipped to replace if these break down. We have delayed with the 2011 for a year already, that replacement of that vehicle. And the other score is lower due to mechanical issues for the 2013. Sandy can probably provide some additional details. And I know Jeremy, who's now working on our fleet, who is our Assistant Public Works Director, can add some additional information as well.
Yep, thank you, Manager. Both vehicles have useful lives of five to eight years. So as City Manager Blaine pointed out, that they are already being pushed out. The 2011 went out one year and the 13 to, it's at seven years right now. We're looking to outfit, especially the 2011, to get that up and running as a full-functioning plow truck, which is not right now. So both of them will become winter vehicles, allowing us to be more efficient in the department as well by outfitting them with the plows. So that's another reason by bringing these forth, we are getting more and more areas to plow and take care of. And this allows us to be out with the regular trucks as well and some of the other pathways.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah. Sandy, I just had a question. In the cover memo, it said 2011, but when you go to the breakdown, it looks like it's a 2010 truck, not that it's a big thing. So is it a 2010 vehicle or a 2011 vehicle?
It's a 2011. My apologies on the scorecard. It's a 2011.
Okay, because I was, okay.
It may have gone in service 2010 based on the model year discrepancies. It could be a 2011 that was purchased on October 1st of 2010.
There's our resident truck expert, thank you, Councilmember. With that being said, and I, Mayor, I respect what you had to say in terms of a conservative budget. I would echo what Councilmember Peterson said. When I think of the DPW and the need for that, this, these trucks to service our city going into the winter and that we've now exceeded the recommended lifespan of both trucks, that I would make the motion that city council authorize the purchase of the two new 2021 GMC 2500 trucks and authorize auction and sale of the two vehicles that we will be giving up.
Support.
But motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion? Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. DPW Director, Madre, what is our remarketing revenue expectation on these two trucks?
Don't have an expectation at this time. Jeremy, do you have those figures?
On those ones, I don't. I have what the new ones will be able to sell after eight years for. But the current ones, I couldn't find anything that gave us a rough value. But we're looking in the $10,000 apiece range, hopefully is what we're hoping to get.
Okay. Does that money then get funneled right back into the revolving fund? Is that the?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Peterson.
Yeah, so Sandy, so a question for you is about, I saw both these vehicles and they have like 30,000 miles on them. Is it because they're used for plowing that they take more abuse than normal? And that's why we can't get more mileage out of them?
Correct. And they, the start and stop, and we never drive more than the, you know, the four square miles in and out of our city. But because of the way that they're used, But because of the way that they're used, that's part of why their useful life is a little shorter than a regular, uh, vehicle is used for residential that's constantly running. So they're always hauling and are plowing or doing the other features within the, the city.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Any further comments? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Ickson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
No.
Okay. Uh, next is the issue of the City Council Limited Tax General Obligation Pension Bonds. Mr. City Manager.
Yep, I'm, I'm happy to, to comment, but, uh, Anthony and Nick can provide other information. In the council packet, um, you'll, you'll note that I actually did not put a cover memo. I had Nick do it. Uh, this was originally because at the time I was not aware, uh, that there was not, uh, conflict of interest. So I stepped away from this particular topic, um, and had the finance, uh, division as well as, uh, uh, Deputy Manager, um, look at it. Um, I've since come to learn that the Huntington Bank and the Huntington Securities are completely separate. In addition, my wife, uh, is not, uh, uh, does not have any of the licensures that she originally had. So there's not any, uh, way for her to actually do any of the securities components. So there is not a, a conflict of interest, uh, there. Um, a little bit of the history and then Anthony or, or Nick can kind of jump in. Hilltop Securities was the firm that we've used, uh, in the past. Um, their staff chose, or majority of their staff chose to move to Huntington Securities. Um, which is the reason why, uh, there would be a, an engagement with now Huntington Securities to move forward. They do have the experience, um, and I know Anthony, Marcy and Nick, uh, contacted both our bond council as well as communicated with, with both. The remaining employees, uh, at Hill, Hilltop as well as, uh, Lou and his team that moved over to Huntington Securities. So I don't know if Anthony or, or Nick want to chime in?
Sure, I, yeah, I can add a little bit to that. Uh, just to add in, so this is coming for council because obviously we want to make sure that it's very transparent. Um, no relationship was found to be in any violation of anything. They're, they're very much completely separate entities. Um, and for this issue, we went on the recommendation of our municipal advisors, uh, Baker Tilly. There's not a lot of experienced, um, consultants in pension bonding in Michigan yet. It's, uh, still kind of a new field. Um, so when we were discussing this early on with Tom Colas and, and Baker Tilly, uh, they had recommended, um, you know. Uh, Lou, specifically Lou, uh, because of his experience and knowledge in the field and, um, how to do these pension bonds. And so far, we've been working with him and getting these, uh, comprehensive financial plans. And all the other data needed for the bonding has been, uh, uh, just amazing. It's been phenomenal. So he's, he's sent us templates. This is what you need to get it through Department of Treasury. Uh, no, don't do that. Do this. Don't do that. He, he's been fantastic with it. So we supported our municipal advisor saying, yes, this makes sense. And, uh, that's the recommendation we have before you.
I would just add, oh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I would just add that and they get no money upfront. This is if we sell the bonds, then they get paid. So all the work Anthony just alluded to is them trying to get to that point of. Being paid when the bonds are issued.
And Mayor, if I also might add, in the end, what, what whoever's doing the scope of work, they're going to be going out and then we would be getting the results. Um, so it's similar to like an RFP that they would then see that, you know, two and a half, two and a quarter, two and three quarter percentages. So that's where we would be getting additional, um, you know, I guess the, the requests and the input from, and we would be using the. Really the skills of Lou and his team, um, you know, to help evaluate and actually do the issuance. Along with Tom Colas, our bond counsel and Baker Tilly, that is our financial advisors.
Very good. Councilmember Salvia.
Okay, so just want to clarify, what is the ask of council tonight? Cause I've heard a couple things. So is the ask that to reaffirm, um, the underwriter? Since they have changed firms and to clarify that there's no, um, conflict of interest with City Manager's wife?
Yep, so, so basically they have spelled out their scope of services and before I signed it, since we were with Hilltop before. Um, the recommendation that the Deputy Manager and the Finance Department have come up with is to move. To the, uh, Huntington Securities, uh, for this particular offering.
So basically, uh, we're staying with the same team. They've just changed, uh, clearing houses or, or business entities. And so it's before council for transparency and to clarify that, correct?
Correct. So if you give me the authority, I would be able to sign, uh, this engagement. And then Anthony and along with Lou and his team would continue their work. Uh, again, as Nick pointed out, they would not get paid unless we do go forward with the issuance and, you know, that, that component.
Okay, I, I don't see any conflict of interest here and I support this. Um, you know, I thought the letter was good in that it clarified, you know, the conflict of interest is the underwriter gets paid more if we issue more bonds. So obviously we need to make the right decision to issue the appropriate amount of bonds, but we're not at that decision point. So, um, I'm good with this.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so do we face any non-compete obligations for, well, you could ask that, Mark, sorry. For Mr. Orkut and his team as they transition from Hilltop to Huntington, did we vet that as well?
Yep, we, we talked with, and Anthony can explain this. We talked with both Hilltop to see if any of the remaining team members. There were a few. They would be able to, but, uh, again, they have, you know, very few, like a, a big client like the city of Detroit. So not smaller ones, uh, infrequent like us. Um, really that's where our bond counsel, uh, Tom Colas recommended sticking with Lou and his team and going over. Uh, we asked the bond counsel to, to review it and then we talked with both and there's not a conflict. We can choose at any time to, to go with any, any firm. So there's not a, uh, commitment. Tonight you would be committing for this particular issue so that I could sign it. But again, if we never issue the bond, then they would not get paid.
Did we confirm with Hilltop that there is not an active non-compete arrangement?
We, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Albrecht? Councilmember Albrecht?
Councilmember Sage got it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions?
Mayor, I have one.
Councilmember Peterson.
I really want to be clear. So the, uh, City Manager, does your wife work still with Huntington?
She works for Huntington Bank, not Huntington Securities.
I understand that. Um, I still feel that's a conflict of interest, um, because of influence. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Uh, I can make a motion. The, uh, what is the motion? I, I was unclear what you were asking. So motion to authorize, um, them as the underwriter?
Authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement with Huntington Capital Markets or Huntington Securities?
And if, and if council would feel more comfortable and fine still allowing the, the Deputy Manager to, 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 to be authorized.
Mayor, I would prefer that the City Manager did not, um, was not the one authorizing this due to his, uh, wife working with Huntington. I do see that as a conflict of interest, even though they're two separate entities that is still on, all under one umbrella.
Um, Ms. Councilmember Salvia, which do you prefer in your motion?
Uh, we can have the Deputy Manager make the, um, sign the contract.
Okay, so motion to have the Deputy Manager sign it.
Yep.
Does the Deputy City Manager have the delegation of authority to do so?
I don't think so.
Yeah, so in my absence, the, the Deputy Manager would. So if, and I'm happy to step down on this particular topic and defer it to Nick. So then he would have the authority.
Mister, is the, uh, City Attorney Jeff, is that? Is that okay?
For sure. You know, that, that, in the instance of a potential conflict, uh, you know, Deputy City Manager. Has all the powers of, of the City Manager, uh, when City Manager is not able to act in that capacity.
Thank you.
You know, let me, let me just say this as working in the securities industry, uh, you know, there is, you cannot execute influence. You know, there's different companies, there's, there's, this is, uh, there's no way that there can be influence on this from my experience being in the industry.
Oh, and I appreciate that, Nancy. Um, I actually just believe that when people have relationships, there is, there is influence no matter what. So I, I'm just really not comfortable with that at all. So if it stays with the City Manager, then I will vote no, um, at that. And I, I would like to know though, from the City Attorney, that in the event that we put this to the Deputy Manager and he is not a Deputy City Manager. And then he is not available or something happens and he retires or anything. And then how would we move forward with the per, then, um, City Manager being a part of this, taking that back over?
Well, it, it's my understanding that the, the motion is just to have, uh, the Deputy City Manager execute this agreement on behalf of the city.
Yes.
Just this contract, it's not anything else.
Correct.
Then how do they communicate with us in the future, Mayor?
Okay, I was gonna say, they actually deal with Anthony.
Okay.
Yep. So I, I would not be, be involved in those conversations.
Okay.
And I confirmed that, yes. Yeah, they actually deal with me on it, but for the actual signing on the city's behalf. That's done through the City Manager or in this case it'd be through Nick. But I deal with, uh, Lou and his team, uh, directly.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up.
We have a second for the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sage. Uh, further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role please.
Ickson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Wow.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Next is a discussion and award of the contract for the master plan services. We had the presentations last week and we are contemplating, um, making a decision tonight if it's the will of the council. Mr. City Manager, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, a few comments again. If, if council or if anybody's following along in the packet. On page seventy-seven is where this item is, uh, starting, uh, for tonight's discussion regarding the master plan services. Uh, again, just a, a quick reader digest version, we had several firms that were, uh, submitted proposals, reviewed by staff. Uh, staff brought forward, uh, two finalists for council's consideration. At the last council meeting, both, uh, firms provided a presentation, um, and answered some questions. Additional questions came in, uh, through council. Those were posed to both of the two firms. Those answers are included in the packet. And just to, uh, reiterate the, the price, McKenna, which is our current planners, um, and have done our last two master plans. They have proposed seventy-five thousand dollars for their services. And Beckett and Raider, um, they have proposed forty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars for, for theirs. Um, after evaluating and, and to potentially help council, my recommendation is going, um, to the lower costing firm. Um, I feel both firms can do the job, but due to, uh, spending general fund dollars, I feel we would get equal, uh, products from, from either. Um, and I don't feel that we need to spend over thirty thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, to do that. So my recommendation would be for the Beckett and Raider, uh, option to complete our master plan. The only other comment I would say is, again, this is a state, uh, controlled or mandated item. Every five years, the, every community needs to go through a master plan, uh, update. And I do see this as an update as we've been doing master plans in our community and following the state law. So this is not start from scratch. Uh, this is an update to our master plan. And I don't know if Deputy Manager, Amanda?
I, I, I agree and we're going to use all, all the information that we have, which was a sound background. And, and give that to whichever firm, obviously McKenna would know it because they generate it. But if it's Beckett Raider that's selected, then they are very cognizant of the fact that we're going to give them all the background that we have. So they don't have to waste time on that and focus on the community engagement portion of this, uh, project.
Very good. Council, Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, I, I, I spoke to the Deputy City Manager on this earlier today. And after the presentation a few weeks ago and, and the plethora of information both firms provided. Um, I felt that Beckett and Raider was hungrier. Um, a, a, and just in the preliminary presentation, uh, I thought, um, the presentations were, were good. Um, I thought that, um, the, uh, McKenna had probably a little more experience and Beckett and Raider. Is sort of an up and coming kind of, uh, firm with all their people in Ann Arbor and looking at their backgrounds and their, their, their schooling and everything else like that. But, so I was sort of on the fence going either way. Um, however, when you look at the, echoing the mayor's comments about a conservative budget. It's not worth a thirty thousand dollar difference, uh, uh, to go with, uh, with, um, McKenna. Even though I, I know we have, uh, a member of McKenna on our, uh, planning commission and does a lot of work with the city. Um, I would, I would support, um, uh, City Manager's recommendation to go with Beckett and Raider for our, um, uh, master plan services contract.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Or?
Or by Councilmember Peterson. Uh, Councilmember Keith Lee, you had your hand up.
Thank you. I, after reviewing these plans and talking with several council members and our City Manager. Um, I think we have a really solid foundation with the master plan that we have right now. And I don't think that it ever hurts to have a second set of eyes. Um, and because of that master plan and the sustainable Rochester plan, um, I feel comfortable going, moving forward with Beckett. Considering that, um, the price difference was so, so large and McKenna, it's my understanding was not willing to compromise on that. So I'm in support of Beckett as well.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I want to say, um, you know, I've been part of council for quite a few years now. And, uh, ever since, um, McKenna was brought on and yes, they've done, you know, some good work and everything for us. I just think that as time is, the times are changing and things like that, um, I, I'm really, I was really very impressed with, um, the, um. New, uh, planners, um, with their enthusiasm, their, um. Uh, as, uh, Councilmember Albrecht sta- stated, like they're, they're hungry for it, but it wasn't just about that. They really, um, they really were very engaged in their presentation of their information and their planning. Um, everything that they have and their, that they proposed that they would be able to do. I just feel that overall for the community, um, this is going to give us a fresh start. And I think with everything that's happening, we have a lot of dynamics at play as we heard from, you know, two of our major, um, you know, um, entities. Ra-Ra and OPC tonight. I think having a new planner and a new set of eyes on our community is probably one of the best things we can do. I also really like the fact that they, um, were working outside of the box on different projects. Um, and overall for the cost as well, um, I, I think that this puts them in the running to help us probably really have. I'm anticipating one of the best, uh, master plans, uh, looking towards our future here in the community. And I'm very, very happy to, um, move in that direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I agree with, 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 um, my colleagues here on, on this board. Both firms are equally qualified. Um, we actually have some more experience with McKenna. We understand that and some, some comfort. My support for, uh, Beckett and Raider would come with a qualification from this board. Um, and a commitment from this board. Um, I will not tolerate a simple update to the existing master plan that will sit on a shelf behind the City Manager's desk. So if we truly envision this as a reimagining of the master plan for the next five years. Given the finite opportunity we have for development within our community and our push towards sustainability. Then it is, is, it's incumbent upon us that if we choose this vendor, it's our responsibility to make sure that they deliver that product.
Very good. Further comments? Uh, Mayor Protem Bavacqua?
Yeah, just, uh, just a couple, uh, thoughts on this as well. Um, uh, you know, one of the concerns I have is that, uh, we're, you know, we're going to, uh. Be leaving behind a little bit of the, uh, the continuity and the experience that, uh, McKenna brings to this process. Um, quick example is the discussion on infill housing. Um, we started that with McKenna at the Planning Commission. It's going to need to continue. Um, I, you know, I, I hope Beckett and Raider can be brought up to speed on that pretty quickly. Um, because I don't think McKenna is going to be involved in it in the, uh, moving forward. Uh, so that's a concern. Um, also want to keep, uh, an eye on add-on costs. Um, cause you know, we may run into a situation where, um, you know, McKenna with their experience. Might have gone down some rabbit holes with us in the past that, you know, um, they wouldn't repeat. But Beckett and Raider, um, you know, without the background and the experience might do something like that. So just keep an eye on that and, uh, make sure that we're not going to end up paying the same in the long run. So, but I, I do appreciate the, the opportunity to, uh, have somebody take a, a different look at this. Thanks.
Further comments? Well, I'd just like to say, I, I see we have McKenna there just to, as, as I said last time, I have a great respect for Vidia. Um, I'm sure both companies could do a good job. Um, in, in my view, that was a pretty significant, uh, difference in price. Um, and I asked City Manager to ask McKenna about that and, you know, it didn't seem to be any, any budging on that price. Um, so, you know, that makes it to me a much easier decision, um, to go with the new one. I, I also agree with Councilmember Sage. We don't want this to, um, sit on a shelf. And we don't want it to be the same thing. But then we've, we've, I've been on council where I've seen some things that are like, we're so far out. You know, that, you know, we just, you know, rejected a lot of it. So I mean, it has to kind of fit into our paradigm of what is Rochester and things. So it'll be interesting to see and I'm very optimistic that this new group will, um, give us a fresh look. So, Madam Clerk, the role please.
Ickson?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Keith Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Clarification on the motion, is this for Beckett and Raider?
Yes.
Yes.
I just connected, I'm back. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Technical problems, Councilmember Salvia, I feel your pain all the time.
I think we should all take a bet on if it's going to happen or not. It seems it always does.
Yeah, well, I know, I know this is off topic, but power goes out on my street on a regular basis, so. But that's neither here nor there. All right, moving on to a discussion, they wore to the contract for the traffic study. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah. So our planning commission, along with city council, has noted, traffic has been a major concern for both. The planning commission is they've been evaluating projects, have had some difficulties. Quite honestly, I think either accepting or believing the results of developers' traffic studies. So staff was requested to look into what could be done. We issued a request for proposal. Again, we narrowed it down to two firms, the firms that could provide traffic analysis. Actually, the main firms are McKenna, and then the other one is Giffords Webster. They both had partners to actually bring a final product to the city. This is one that really is development comes in, it's, you know, a question. So, and this is going to cost, you know, at least sixty-seven thousand dollars. So the Gifford Webster one was at sixty-two thousand, five hundred. And then there would be either an annual or every other year additional ongoing cost to update the traffic analysis. The McKenna one is at eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And then they're estimating about ten thousand dollars for ongoing updates. This is one that's interesting because we would also look at some sort of cost sharing component. So when developers, although I cannot guarantee any more projects would come in, but if a developer did come in, that we would run them through the scenario that we set up this analysis. And that information then would be shared with our planning commission and then eventually city council if the project goes before council. So as you'll see in the packet, you know, Nick and I, this is on page ninety in the packet, you know, looked at and feel that either one of these developers, excuse me, either one of these firms, vendors, could provide the services that we're looking for doing this traffic analysis, setting up a structure that would evaluate and then be adjusted with each developer that would come in. However, you know, there, with the cost, this is something for councils to consider, is not moving forward with either. And that would, you know, not cost the city the sixty-seven thousand and still allow the developers, you know, to come in with their hired firms, which are legally licensed, just like an architect, to actually provide the information during the planning commission component. Again, as we've been watching our budget numbers, that is also another, I guess, option for council's consideration. So I would be fine with either one of these firms to do this traffic study. I would also be okay with not spending the over sixty thousand dollars and then the annual ongoing maintenance to update the actual structure of the analysis. And Deputy Manager Banda, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add?
No, other than we had a very, this started around the riverfront project that's at Walnut at first. And the residents came out pretty much en masse, but a lot of pressure on the plaintiffs and said they didn't believe the figures. The developer went back and spent ten thousand more dollars with Fleece Vanderbrink, which is the guru of traffic, and came back with the exact same numbers and showed an increase of five percent. And this time the planning commission evaluated it, asked pointed questions, and they made a decision based on that information that was provided. Information is information on traffic, you can't make it up. So it's a, it's a national model that you plug into what your uses are, who the people that are going to live there, et cetera. So for when Vane and I sat down, sixty thousand of ongoing cost is a lot of, we pay a lot of roads with that when we can, McKenna, our planners, will still be reviewing the traffic information with their traffic engineers when it comes in. Obviously, I'm not even sure I would work if they became the traffic engineer, who's going to review their work there? So that makes it a little more confusing, but so I'm good with, we'll do anything you want, but we are okay without spending.
All right, Councilmember Keithley.
Thank you. I appreciated seeing this on the agenda because I remember door knocking last summer. And one of the things I heard on repeat was that traffic is an issue and continues to be an issue. People are concerned about it. So I think anything that we can do to help alleviate that is beneficial. I don't know that there's any benefit in doing this now, though, because we're not in a, in a normal time. People aren't driving or commuting like they normally do. And I don't know that we would get any, anything added from having a study right now because this is not a time to, I don't think, make judgments or decisions about traffic.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I support Councilmember Keithley's feelings. I heard the same thing. But when I look at sixty-two thousand or ninety-six thousand dollars, I see a road we can fix instead of doing this. We're not, we're, maybe we push this another year if we need another year. A lot of the developments we have, there are no shovels going in the ground. I don't see that we're, in the next year, we're going to see a lot of traffic flows being impacted by some of these developments that, you know, are on the books. And we hope they come at some point in time. But we're at a time right now where there's not a lot of development. And to spend sixty-two or to ninety-six thousand dollars on a study that is going to, you know, coming back to Councilmember Sage's thing, sit on a desk for a year at least. I would punt this another year.
Councilmember Salvia.
Right, so in line with those comments, I'd like to make a motion to table this for twelve months to bring it back to council in a year.
Motion by Councilmember Salvia.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I am in agreement with everyone, all the, my colleagues' comments regarding this. I do not feel that we should be spending any money like this. We were talking earlier about essential services, and this is not at this time. Also, you know, I've been here for, I don't know, over thirty-five years. And I actually lived on, right on First Street and in that area there. And that, with that development going in down at the bottom there by the riverfront, which I think is awesome, to have that coming into town. We have to remember, we have more traffic on First Street no matter what because we have an apartment complex there that houses many people, more than one apartment complex there. We also have the school down at the end of the street, which we have the buses. We have people bringing their kids to and from school. It's inevitable for that area to have that traffic anyhow, no matter what, whether we put this development in or not because the traffic's been there, it's never changed. I really do think, though, that spending this kind of money right now on something like this is ridiculous because we've already had a traffic study not done long ago, and I don't think it's ever been used. And I don't know how we could even justify these numbers with the tax dollars. So not in support of even tabling this at this point. I think it's not a necessity. And I also feel that when we have developers that come to our community to bring their projects and they're spending their hard-earned money to do these, if we start questioning people like that, we're going to lose good developers coming to our community. So overall, I just think it's a bad move overall. And we need to trust those that come here and then really take a honest look at our own community about what kind of traffic we have here. And as everyone says, we're regional downtown, so we created that and we're going to have it because we're a pass-through. So it's what happens. Thanks.
Councilmember Sage.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and I want to piggyback on Councilmember Peterson's comments. To my mind, every, every development that comes before the planning commission, we require some kind of traffic impact study. So to me, that, that data is fluid, right? It's continually updated as new developments come to us. You couple that with the master plan process, which is going to provide a completely different set of data surrounding the same subject, there is no reason for us to pay sixty thousand dollars or whatever for a traffic study right now. And I'm willing to table it, but I'm not sure I'm going to have much support twelve months from now either to do one on our own when this is already an ongoing part of our process in the future development of the city.
And Mayor, if I may add?
Councilmember Peterson.
Well, and I guess I would, I would like to, like, rely on city administration to not send things out for bid to, on things like this until we've had a chance to actually, you know, really talk about them because this is time and money for these people as well. And, I mean, unless we know for sure, this is something we truly need. I mean, I'd hate to see them wasting their time like this because I don't want to lose good business down the road either if we ever do need them.
Mr. Mayor, this was not staff-driven, just for the record, planning commission.
Yeah, this came from the planning commission.
Thanks.
Further comments? So the motion on the table, the motion is to table this for one year.
Correct.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the role please.
Dixon.
Yes.
Bavakwa.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Keithley.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Next, we move on to reports from various boards and commissions. We see a report from the DDA. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor, and that was the meeting I was not at. Thank you.
Okay. So we kind of got a report from Christie. Also, we had a resignation from the DDA, Jason Rewald is resigning from the DDA. So we actually have two openings to appoint. So if anybody has any people they'd like to call, give me a call. I'd like to try to appoint somebody by the next city council meeting. Okay. Next is a report from the planning commission. Mayor Protem Bavakwa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing we looked at was City Hall vestibule that quickly passed through. So we're moving forward on that one. We saw once again the multifamily project on twelve oh five North Main, the sort of brownstone concept come in front of us. It's, still needs to cook a little more, not quite soup yet. He's going to be coming back to see us again in the near future. So more on that as it comes. And then, of course, we have the somewhat contentious Riverfront Place Apartments project that came in front of the planning commission for recommendation to the city council for special exception, or sorry, special project designation approval. And they approved the site plan on it. So there were a lot of calls from residents on that one. There was one dissenting vote, which was me. You know, we're going to, we're going to see it again here at council, so I'll reiterate my concerns at that point. So look forward to seeing that one coming, I think sometime in September, so. Other than that, I think that was it.
Yeah, I think that was it. There's a number of, I would say, loose ends that have to be cleaned up before it comes to council. So they're going to have to do that before we bring it to council. And I think Mayor Protem and I maybe disagreed on the final vote, but I think we, I'm going to put words in his mouth, I think we agreed on the parking or the traffic study that, you know, they can have, they can say all they want, but, you know, some of it was hard to, you know, if you live in the city, some of it was hard to believe, I guess. So that, you know, to me, that puts the whole traffic study thing. We know there's a traffic issue, but the traffic studies sometimes state the obvious and things. So, you know, that's an issue that I guess we need to really look at going forward. Councilmember Salvia.
So that was the August third planning commission, if council or residents want to watch the presentation?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that up yet, Leanne O'Connor?
I don't know, but I think Jane would know.
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, so you can watch that. And again, they have to come and they're going to have to make an entire presentation to the city council about it because it is a special project. And really, the issue is that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Protem, but the issue that they're looking for special project status on is the setbacks are the issue.
Yeah, yeah, it's, the setbacks are very small. I can't remember, maybe it was the underlying zoning required twenty-five, maybe? Nick, I don't know if you, if you want to chime in on that. I don't know what the underlying zoning required for setbacks, but, but they couldn't meet it with their current plan.
Yeah, it was the front yard setback. It's a ratio of building height, but it's about twenty-five feet. So they were trying to find a happy medium between First Street Loft, which is zero, and then what they are, so they compromised by pushing it back. But it would be the front yard setback. I think one of the rear yards for the condos below was by the path, so it was basically that, right?
But again, we'll, we have some issues on bonding and some things on the, on the roads and, you know, a bunch of things that they have to get set before it comes to council. So we're looking at, you know, maybe the first meeting in September. But again, they have to work some things out with the city before we're going to even bring it to the council. And again, they will make a complete presentation to, of this council because, you know, the city council has the ultimate authority and vote on this. Okay. Next is, any further questions? Next is the Tree Committee. Chairman Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, thank you. We've had some interesting meetings back and forth. I'd like to thank City Attorney Kroc for being an attorney because he keeps it going. We take one step forward, a couple steps back, but we are making progress, seriously. And I'd like to thank the HOAs for their passion and their commitment to the issues at hand. We are meeting again, as the, I think this turned into a weekly meeting. So we, the Tree Committee are meeting on Thursday, and then we will again be with the HOAs. I think we are, if you use a football analogy, we're moving the ball down the field. Whether we get a field goal or a touchdown remains to be seen. But we anticipate after our meeting this week on Thursday, we'll meet with the HOAs again the following week and hopefully get something to you on the twenty-fourth meeting, if not the first meeting in September. But we are making progress and I appreciate all the work that Nick and Jeff have done and the HOA leadership that have participated in this process.
Good, and I thank everybody on the Tree Committee for their work. And I think this really says, this is a topic that really needed a complete looking at. And so I'm really thankful for you, the guys are doing on this. And I'm looking forward to, you know, something really good for the city. So that'll, that'll be good. Next is the Infrastructure Committee. Councilmember Albrecht or Salvia?
I can, I can start since you handled trees. I can start with the infrastructure. So again, coming up in the city manager's report, you're going to see that in the August.
Councilmember Salvia, we're losing you again.
I'm back. Am I back?
Now you're back.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're not back. How about Councilmember Albrecht first?
Councilmember Salvia really should present this report because she is the one that's really so passionate about this. But what I think she was going to say is that in the next August twenty-fourth meeting, we've been spending a lot of time on the marketing of the water study to the residents, to city council. We looked at the next four or five years. We talked a lot about east side, west side water. We talked about infrastructure. And again, while we talked about, you know, a master plan today, we talked about a traffic study here. And I'm echoing comments that all of us on the Infrastructure Committee have said, this is, this is money well spent. And I think the residents are going to be happy when they get educated about water and how we, not just the cost of water coming out of the tap, but the infrastructure. We are, as Mayor Protem Bavakwa once said, we are an older city with older pipes and the infrastructure has to be done. infrastructure. We are, as a, as a, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua once said, we are an older city with older pipes and, and the infrastructure has to be done. So um, we, we, we're looking for, we're looking forward to the presentation by Raf Telus on the 24th. And I, I, I think the residents and, uh, uh, the city council members will all be very, uh, pleased with the work that's been done by the infrastructure committee, uh, DPW and city administration.
Councilmember Salvia, you back?
I'm back and thank you. Well stated, Councilmember Albrecht. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Keith Lee.
Got a quick question on that per maybe Councilmember Salvia or Albrecht can, can answer it. I s- I was reading in the announcements that went out for the notification regarding the water service line, um, replacement program that we're offering like water tests if you have letter copper goosenecks. Is that for everyone or is that just for the people who received that notification? Maybe your city manager would know the answer.
Your city manager?
Yeah, yeah, it actually is just, so we, we've actually gone through our whole city and determined, uh, you know, that there's, uh, basically less than 30 residential uh, addresses that are impacted, uh, with the, the gooseneck, which the state has determined is a, uh, letting copper issue. So, um, that testing component is for those, those properties. Um, and, uh, so they got specific letters and we've actually scheduled uh, town hall meetings, um, with the, the different, uh, I guess categories for those two groups, and those will be happening later on this month.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Good.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I have a question. I received one of those and I wondered why I received one of those, and I haven't heard from anyone since I received that in the mail. And I meant to bring it up at the last meeting.
I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Mr. City Manager, I think that's a different mailer that we all got, um, but maybe.
Hmm, correct.
I can follow up with, uh, Sandy in the list to see if, which letter you would have received.
Okay, well, no, I'll bring, bring it to you tomorrow or send it to you.
Okay.
I, I think that's.
Picture with your phone and let me know.
Yep.
Yeah, hopeful, hopefully you're not on that list, Councilmember Peterson.
Well, no, I was just hoping though, when I read that though, I think to the, once I received it as well, I just thought, well, this is kind of interesting because we didn't really talk about all of this to know that all this was, when it was going out or that it was going out and who was going to be receiving it, so.
Right, I think, I think, you, and that was correct. You, I think we were all a little, I, I think the city manager maybe talked about that in his, uh, manager's report.
Right.
Um, one of those that, yeah, and I think, you know, we want to be, be better aware of that, maybe coordinate all that stuff through Jane. Or, you know, or something like that. So, but yeah, that, that was an issue. We did not know about that when it got sent out.
So, so, so there's two letters and I just want to clarify. So, uh, the letters that, uh, there's door hangers that were placed last week uh, from the city and then we actually mailed out letters and then we also knocked on the doors. That was in regards to the lead copper that was, uh, coordinated through the city and through our, our public works department along with Jane. There was a previous letter that one of our vendors actually drafted, um, and actually sent out that was not coordinated through the, uh, community relations position, Jane's position, uh, and that was what was mailed out. So there's two letters. Uh, we've since notified that vendor and those coordination from our public works with that vendor will go through Jane as well.
Okay.
So that, the, the, the one letter that went without our communications person, that was more of a trifold, uh, kind of brochure um, compared to an actual physical letter that states that you have lead and copper. The one that the vendor sent out was more of an informational state requirement, um, that they, they've been using the state's template and just plopped in the city's information and mailed out.
Right, and it did make that letter, that got sent out by the state, didn't make it look like all of us had all kinds of problems in our, in our houses, I think. So, uh, yeah, that was not, that was not appreciated, um, as well.
We, we did post on the city's website information trying to clarify that because that was, you know, basically out of our control that they mailed that out.
Right. But we had to pay for it, right?
I can follow up with Sandy and Jeremy, how, how that actually works, uh, but I believe the info, like a informational piece would be required, so the city would have to pay. Uh, and I'm not sure how that, that vendor actually.
So it was, it was confusing.
In authorize it.
Yeah, it was confusing and a unfunded mandate at the same time.
Yes.
So, uh, all right, next, that's a new business referral miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
Um, there's not too much that I want to highlight to, uh, this meeting. Uh, it was just highlighted that our upcoming meeting on the 24th, we will be talking about the, uh, the water rates and the sewer rates, so that, that, you know, I guess tune in. Uh, in addition to that, um, on the back of our city council packet on page 132, I did list a few other items, um, and, uh, just wanted to highlight that our, our staff is working with the, the DDA, um, and any resident that calls in regarding any issues that may come up regarding our masks, uh, uh, physical and social, uh, distancing as well as the additional signage that's been added. So, um, you'll continue to see additional signage out and if there is even a perceived question, um, staff has been working with those businesses, uh, to get a resolution. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, City Clerk, I think something happened this week to talk about, maybe?
Little thing. Um, first, I want to thank council for your patience, um, with my, uh, minutes submittals late Sunday afternoon so that I could focus on the election. Um, it was very helpful. Um, the election went very well. Um, I think I should, um, offer some thank yous to the 30 plus election workers, uh, that showed up to work that day along with some state, city staff members, Jane, Ciana, Anthony, Holly, and former deputy city clerk Megan Frazo. Uh, we have 38% turnout compared to 15% four years ago for the same election. We had a just over 2,600 absentee ballots submitted and we had 1,200 people vote at the polls. Um, and the entire day went really, really well. I can tell you though, I have the same concern as probably everybody in the United States about the post office. Um, out of the, they were running a week to two weeks behind with, um, some deliveries and that did impact some ballots. Um, I think, uh, I'm gonna come up with a plan to, for going forward with this, this coming November election of having some, uh, outside of regular business hours, um, for absentee ballots so that people would have that option on a weekly basis to come in and get their ballot and bypass the, uh, post office if, um, they feel uncomfortable with that as well. Um, we have probably more than 3,000 that'll go out that first batch. Um, and along that same lines, I think what I will do is that first Saturday that I have them ready, which should be Saturday, September 26th, um, have, have city hall open for and advertise it as much as we can to have city hall open and let any of those 3,000 people come in and pick up their ballots as well, so that, that we're just not putting that much mail through the post office if at all possible. So, um, and I think that's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Miss City Clerk. Um, so when we send the, the ballots out end of September for the November election, do we prompt them? What, what is the last date that they can send them in? And my only question is kind of leading is we know there's going to be delays in mail being delivered. So are we able, is it within our purview to say, please return this by?
There was a lot of advertisement for that, the, this election, and I noticed a significant increase in the number of ballots that were delivered to city hall and using our Dropbox. Um, and in fact, um, ballots that came through the post office past election day, I checked them on today and there was less than 10. So people were seeing the reports themselves and, um, I gotta say, I think, uh, the day before election, I, I got over 500 in that one day. Um, just in the office. So I think people are heeding, um, the concerns and, um, that they, they did very well with that.
Will there be, you know, I, I, I saw something that, uh, within the manager's report that they've upped the timeline. So from October 31st to September 30th for the census to be returned. Um, and so are, have we communicated anything with regards to that? And where do we stand? Maybe Jane can give us an update on, uh, our fulfillment rate on that.
Yeah. Jane has been your lead on the census.
How are we doing, Jane?
Yes, uh, so we are about 78%, um, and we are communicating that change in date. They just moved up, um, with more numerators supposedly going out in that timeframe in the next month and a half, um, and working, I've been, you know, continuing with the main social media and website communication, and then as well, working directly with the apartment condo and management companies and then the HOA groups as well to try and raise awareness. Um, still getting calls and people coming into here, into city hall and asking, how do I get a mail form or how do I fill this out? So there's definitely still people who are tuned in and, uh, completing that, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're gonna have an election like no other this fall, so we have to be ready.
I do have one, um, two other things to add as well, too. I did receive notice that the Oakland County Board of Commissioners um, has approved using CARES Act money to provide prepaid postage, um, for return ballots. So that will be on the envelope in some fashion that it's already prepaid. Um, and then second, um, uh, we have a, we have accepted applications through last Friday for the deputy city clerk position. Uh, hopefully we will have interviews sometime next week and maybe have an update on a hiring at your next meeting.
Very good. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Yeah, uh, that, that prepaid comment, uh, brought up a question in, uh, my mind. Um, Leanne, is there any sense of, I, I, I think, or maybe correct me if I'm wrong, it was my understanding that it, uh, two stamps were required on those, uh, mail-in ballots. Um, was that the case first of all? And secondly, uh, do you have any sense of whether there are ballots that didn't make it because of the, I, I mean, I don't know how you would, I guess they'd just be returned, but, or in, you know, in your community, have you heard anything about it?
Um, have not. Um, our percentage was just a, a little bit smaller, um, than it was four years ago. Four years ago, we got back about 85% of ballots. This time we got back 78% of ballots. So, you know, that happens because they think the president's on it if it's in a presidential year, and then there's just that fall off in interest. Um, so, uh, we still did very well. Um, as far as the amount of postage, what I was telling people is that it was, it took, it cost us 65 cents to mail it out. Um, it only would have been one extra envelope, the outside envelope wasn't coming back. So I certainly knew that it was more than the one 50 cent stamp to send it back. So that's why we were telling them, um, two stamps. But having said that, I gotta, I gotta say that, and I can go through them if you want me to, but I would say more than half of them, especially towards the end, a good majority of them were being dropped off. People weren't even going to the, using the post office for us, so.
Okay, thank you.
Crazy stuff when the post office doesn't work.
Yeah, right now.
Time.
Does not.
That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, Nick, Police Chief, anything from you guys?
Um, good, sir. No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Attorney Jeff?
I'm also, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm good. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Keith Lee.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Leanne and everyone who did work the polls on Tuesday and who processed the ballots. It's important work and it's a difficult time to be doing it in, so I'm really glad that we didn't have a problem. Um, you know, getting workers or getting those ballots processed. So I'm, I'm thankful to hear that. And I also wanted to ask if we can, um, I'd like to, to investigate more of the social drinking district. If that is something that council has any appetite for, or at least to hear from the chief about what his thoughts are on that. So I'd like to request that that be a topic of conversation at some point moving forward.
That's it.
Okay, very good. Mr. City Manager, you'll put that on the next agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Sage.
Uh, nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things. One, again, uh, I want to, uh, thank Leanne and all the volunteers for a very well-run election process. Um, going to the poll, I thought it was very well done. It was very, uh, very well laid out and, um, again, everyone who worked so hard uh, to do this under these conditions as well. So thank you. I very much join that. Wanted to thank the DDA as well. Um, as it was brought up earlier, the collaboration studio and that location, um, I've been in there several times. I've directed people to go there. Um, I think the pre-planning and everything that Christie had done to get some things going and that Love Local brand, which I've bought a lot of things and distributed to, uh, people in the community, um, as gifts. Um, and it's, um, uh, everyone loves what she's done there. Um, I do think in the future, um, I know, uh, that would probably be an ideal place because other communities I've been to, they have a place that's right in their downtown area, main street area, uh, for people to go and visit, learn, you know, and, um, I also love how they've been so collaborative with the other businesses in town to bring in, uh, the different art displays and, uh, and that. I think it's just been a phenomenal experience to have that as a positive while everything is going on. Um, and I also have, uh, really wanted to give a shout out to all the restaurants uh, who have worked so hard to, uh, utilize these platforms. And I think that has just brought a new, a, a new breath of fresh air to our community and shows that, you know, we're a delightful community to enjoy uh, dinner outside and, and do that. So kudos to all the restaurants who have gone above and beyond to stay in business and, um, and do this. I think it's been, um, one of the, uh, best things we've done for our community in a long time. So to all of them, thank you. And, um, I guess that's, no, and I wanted to say, um, Attorney Jeff Crott, thanks for moving to town. Yes, yeah, excited to have you here.
It's, it's a definitely a great location and, and I, uh, I, I love my office there.
I was gonna say thanks for slumming, but you know, hey.
I'm now a proud member of the PSD and DDA, so.
There you go. You're a, you're a townie now, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
The question is, can you spend the night there if you had to?
Um, my desk is a little hard, but, uh, no, it's a, it's a, it's a very nice little office, but, uh, it's, uh, it, it will not come with a bed, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Salvia.
Um, yes, just, um, real quick, just in, remind everyone to enjoy, uh, the free parking in downtown through Labor Day as well as the Thursday night markets on the, uh, the top of the parking deck.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I'm sorry, I had one thing I forgot to bring up.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, this is regarding planning commission. Um, I'm not sure, I, I'm very, I'm, I'm actually very upset about, uh, the Tide Cleaners that has gone into town um, in that development there. Um, and I don't know if any of the other council people have driven by to see that and see the impact that it has made up against residential properties. Um, but I think that is something that we need to think about, uh, when we are looking at plans and things like that of these buildings coming in because, uh, that is probably the most, I thought my parking structure in my backyard was bad, uh, this is worse. And I, I don't know what kind of guidance we can give people or why we're going to total zero lot lines in something like this. But, um, I don't know, it's very, very disappointing. So I think it's ruining some of the character of our community. And I hope that we can start being a little more mindful with these developers when they come in with their plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bavacqua.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay. Um, I just have a few myself. First, I want to thank, uh, Leanne and the city for the election and the hard work. And really thank everybody for, you know, being out in the COVID world. And really thank everybody for, you know, being out in the COVID world. Um, you know, to make sure we have free elections and stuff. So thank you to all those workers. Um, a question I get from a lot of the boards and commissions and stuff is about the virtual meetings. Um, you know, we are still, the, the city council and, um, the boards and commissions are still virtual until further notice. And I'm not sure I see it changing anytime soon. You know, Blaine and I are in constant communication on that. But, you know, going further, I think we're gonna be virtual for a long time. And then finally, just, um, what, what Nick said, this, you know, the city gets a lot of calls about masks and social distancing. And, um, you know, we need, we need to be leaders. And I think as Nancy, uh, Councilmember Salvia said last time, we just need to be nice because there's a lot of angry people. And, you know, we just need to try to be good neighbors, uh, but also people need to wear masks and have social distancing. Um, so let's continue to be leaders in that. Um, any further comments? Um, without further ado, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody for coming tonight. And, um, we will see you guys soon. So.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Night.